Morning again, everyone. If you'll turn off your cell phones. All right, everyone. No. Well, thank you all. Where do we start with, eh? These are our peeps. Our peeps. That was embarrassing. Will recess. Will recess. Will recess to the back.
Our street.
We're poor is not a crime.
Seed, excuse me. If you care, and really care, you'll sit down and observe the decorum of this body who is taking everything in earnest and with dignity, and I expect the same from each of you. If you are part of our community, which is what you are saying you are, then please be respectful of your peers, your colleagues, your people that work so hard every day to make this a good place. Now, anybody... Excuse me. If there's any more... If there's any more screaming, any more screaming from anyone, I'm going to have you removed from the council chambers. We have a lot of work to do today. We want to hear from each of you, but we want the dignity and respect that you want, and we want it too. So any more screaming, I'm going to ask a marshal to escort you out. And you may have your signs, and we will give you opportunity to speak. But we have a lot of people that do business here and want to be heard and move their motions. So what we're going to have now is the respect of humanity for each other. And we up here... Excuse me. You are going to be removed. One more time like that, that is a total rudeness and lack of respect for this community and the people you are purporting to represent. So one more time, ma'am, and I'm going to have the marshal escort you out. Do you want to leave right now? No, there's public comment time. This is a government. Excuse me. No. We have this organized. I would like you to please sit down. Let us conduct our business. There is opportunity, and I will explain everything as we go, so you will be heard. So please be respectful. Sit down. And anybody who would like to excuse themselves now because you can't abide by the process of this government, please leave now. Talk to each other. Make up your mind. One more outburst from you, ma'am, and you're gone from here. Nope. One more. I have... You do not. At this time, you have a choice. You can either be quiet or you can leave because there is public comment time. So please, counsel, I would like to also excuse Councilwoman Seaman, who is out of town but will be calling us later. And we will now proceed on with the agenda this morning. Public comment. So this is... Listen to what I'm going to be telling you because you're going to have choices. Life is about choice. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. If you're here to speak on Bill Number 201936, we are going to take public comment when that item is heard. That is... It is 36. Item 62. What is the 36 that's in here? Oh, it is Agenda Item 62. That's the one that you're here on. We are going to take public comment at the time of that Agenda item. If you cannot stay till that item is heard, we will now take each speaker during this front-end public comment, but your time will be limited. So I'm going to ask each speaker... Say that again. Anybody who cannot stay till Agenda Item 62 is being heard, please do come up at the appropriate time in a few minutes, state your name, and we want to know your residence. Are you from here in Nevada or are you from somewhere else and have come to support our motion or be against it? So we will ask you to state your name, and we're going to have you get in lines, whether you're pro or con. But this is only for those who cannot remain till Agenda Item 62 is being heard. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda on any other item, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. At this time, all public comments and our city clerk here will record it after you say your name and your residence at one minute. Keeping in mind that we get to Agenda Item 62, if you speak now, you can't speak on Agenda Item 62 at that time. And we will be trailing that item after all of our city business is done because we have so many that want to comment. So thank you very much for your courtesy. And if you will come, remember you either make your comment now with one minute, and you will not be allowed to speak again at the item when we hear it later. So please come forward, and you can come right up to the microphone and speak. And thank you for coming. I appreciate it. Okay. Now, we have to do this first. Good morning.
Good morning, your honorable mayor.
No, we're not going to start your clock until you say your name, and then we want to make sure that our clerk can understand it and record it, and then where you live. Where is your home?
My name is Leonard Martin. I'm a resident of Ward 5 for 16 years. Good morning, honorable...
Excuse me, and this doesn't count either. Please, everyone, let's be respectful. He's been living here all this time, wants to be heard. And so, please, now remember again, you speak now, you don't speak, get Agenda Item 62. My apologies. We'll start the clock after you finish your entry right there.
I'm sorry, sir. Your name one more time?
Good morning. My name is Leonard Martin. I'm a resident of Ward 5 for 16 years. I live 15 minutes walking distance from any other social services or shelters that provide help for the poor and the homeless. And I just have a few words to address the council and you also, mayor. And I would like to thank you, mayor, personally for your office answering my inquiry when I asked about this issue. Thank you very much.
Okay, so your comments. Now, we're starting the clock.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. I would like to thank the mayor, city council, for this opportunity to address this ordinance being proposed. I've been a resident of Ward 5 for 16 years. I live walking distance from either of the shelters that try to provide for the poor and homeless. I also come to know some of these citizens personally and some not so personally. I volunteer my services feeding the homeless at my house of worship, Victory Missionary Baptist Church, passed by Dr. Robby D. Fowler, Sr. My opinion is that this proposal is not practical. And if it's not practical, it doesn't make sense. This, to me, would create a vicious cycle that would incarcerate citizens and take away any future at... Any future at opportunities of employment. Social service on Pinto Lane only takes a number of people Monday through Thursday, if I'm not mistaken. How about implementing a plan to bring these city ser...
I'm sorry, sir. Your time's up. We have so many waiting, so I'm really sorry. Thank you for coming down and appreciate your respect.
Good morning. My name is Brian Harris. I'm the president of the Black Business Council and the creator of the Independent Black Voters Group. Our vote is not free. I live in Henderson. I'm here to speak about the issue that comes forth today. Social injustice is a major issue here and across the world, across the United States. Social injustice is caused by greed. We know the fact. There are three reasons that are predating homelessness. One, we do not have affordable housing. Number two, we do not have jobs that are created with a living wage. And number three, mental illness is the issue. We need to focus on the three issues here and not just try to hide the homeless by setting up new agendas that will basically force them away from our sight. I do not like seeing people in tents. I do not like seeing people homeless. But we need to fix the problem. We need to come up with solutions. We cannot continue to just come up with reasons that are good for people to keep them out of mind and out of sight. Thank you.
How you doing, mayor? City council? My name is Henry Thorns, 2151 Centus Hill. Senator Creer, I came to you personally with this, and I still haven't heard back from you. But anyway, I've been here since 1960.
Mr. Hand, that's Councilman Creer to you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. I've been here since 1960, and it's just getting worse and worse for our community, for black people. And we want to know why. You know, I asked you guys to clean up a park at Doolittle. It went from cleaning up pigeon nests to getting rid of the homeless people. You know, just because we say clean up our parks, the city council, the city have jobs. We need jobs in our community. The homeless need jobs in our community. Some states are getting homeless jobs to keep the neighborhood clean. So why can't we give our homeless people jobs so they can keep clean? And I've been following this a long time because North Las Vegas gave up millions of dollars to stop the homeless. I never know whatever happened to that project that was on Orange and Las Vegas Boulevard. And you just approved millions of more dollars for the homeless people behind Whipple over here. So where's all this money going? Because it's not going to our people. You know, I'm not here to do...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, mayor. Counsel. My name is Anthony Casabianca. I'm getting residents here, there and everywhere. Yeah, Mrs. Goodman, I was telling you, it's just bad. It's like I said, it's... Again, I'll say it. Excuse my language. It's damn landlords. I don't make enough. And when I do make enough, is I have to have my family. We have another whole new families industry. We're all out. Now, I finally got a place, but now the landlord is telling me that I can't have anybody there. How am I going to afford to live? And this is impossible. We have to ask maybe the federal government or something to raise our disability to meet the requirements of the rent, like New York does. I mean, there is also two. I came... We're Number 10. I went on... If you go on YouTube, it's called the homeless... The worst homeless people in the United States. And we're Number 10 on it. It's ridiculous. I mean, it's crazy. I mean, you can't force anybody...
Would you be good enough? You forgot to give us your name and your residence.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Anthony Casabianca. Here, there and everywhere.
Name and residence, please. You got it?
Yeah, yes. My name is Anthony Casabianca. And my residence is...
You have a landlord. Where is your residence right now?
I'm homeless right now.
So you don't have a landlord?
No. Uh-uh.
Okay, thank you.
Not at the moment. I do not...
Thank you. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, you're welcome.
Appreciate it.
That's all I can say.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you would please allow the public to speak. This is not your time. Sir, please come on up, state your name and your... Ma'am, one more time, and we're going to have you escorted out. This is their time. You want to speak, get in line, please. Yes, sir, please. Your name and your residence for us, for our record.
Okay. I'm George Allen. I'm a home care worker, and I am homeless. I am. I'm the working homeless. Okay? We need to be able to work together. We need to find a way. Because if we can build stadiums, then we can build housing for the homeless. This is just not a problem in Las Vegas. This is a national problem. And I want to support you in getting to get funding. Okay? I want... Because it should be an executive order from the president to say it's an emergency for housing in this country. Number one, county social services need to change how they deal with the homeless. You got to have zero income in order to get help. What happened to the working homeless? I have a son who's disabled.
I'm sorry, sir. I'd love you to give us more. I appreciate your work, your thoughts, everything because we're concerned with you.
I understand that. But also Medicaid needs to change how they have...
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. We are with you. Thank you.
Mr. Allen, Mr. Allen, my staff, Chance Bonaventura or Dan Burdish will be right out here to meet with you to make an appointment for you to come to my office and speak with us. So stay around, and they will find you. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Excuse me. Sir, before you start, would you remove your hat, please? Thank you.
My name is Minister Stred Sanders. The scripture says, "Woe to the shepherds..."
I'm sorry. What's your residency, Mr. Minister?
350 South Durango. Got to meet by residency?
Yeah, is it Las Vegas?
Yes. The scripture says, "Woe to the shepherds who feed themselves and not the flock." Mayor Goodman, you're in the city council. It seems to me that you are only interested in feeding yourself and not the flock. And I say to you all, shame on you. You should be ashamed of yourself. You are a lousy city council and you're a lousy mayor. With that being said, as a minister for justice, it's my place to say this. It breaks my heart to know that we're trying to criminalize the poor. We claim to love Jesus. We claim to be believers of a Christ, believers of Allah, believers of Buddha. And look how we treat those. The Bible says, "Lift up those who are poor, who are the least of these, and not lock up the least of these." If Jesus wasn't a sheep, would we lock up Jesus? So it hurts my heart to know that we are so... Just lack of empathy, so cruel. Mayor Goodman, the way you talked to us earlier was just totally...
Thank you very much. It's the end of your meeting.
Hello. My name is Kendall Sanders. My residency is also 350 South Durango. I'm aware that this is going to cut into my time, but I feel that I need to say it. I am sorry. I don't know your name. Not Mayor Goodman, but the woman sitting next to you. I just would like to say I do not appreciate you rolling your eyes during my husband's speech. He had every right to say what he said. And as a minister, as a minister, you should show him some respect, just like you demand everybody out here to show you respect. And go ahead and roll your eyes at me, too. Thank you. So I would like to start by saying that... I'll just be really quick because I know it's going to cut into my time. It's probably going to cut off now. But I just think that what is trying to be passed is extremely disheartening. There are women out there who are literally bleeding down their legs because they cannot afford what they need to take care of their menstrual cycles. You can smirk at me, you can roll your eyes, but you don't know what it's like to sleep on the streets. And you don't know what it's like to go without feminine products. You don't know what it's like to sleep every night and wonder if you're going to be sexually assaulted. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. Please come up.
Good morning. My name is Alexis. I reside in Las Vegas. All right, so to analogize...
Excuse me. Before you start the minute, please, where did you say you reside?
Right here in Las Vegas.
Yeah, but wait...
10452 Crispina Ave.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So to analogize exactly what's going on right here, I would correlate my experience as a breast cancer patient to an insurance carrier that told me that my life had no value. So by us, the constituents coming into this space today to implore you to take care of our homelessness or our unhoused problem, it's no different from that insurance carrier that told me they would not care for me, a breast cancer survivor. And so, in us trying to find solutions and us working towards the betterment of our community, we will support you. Everyone in this space will support you if you can rally with us to put pressure on our federal government to make sure that our city is funded. We are trying to be solutions-oriented. I'm speaking fast because I know I have little time. But instead of displacing people and building criminal records, we need to look at the statistics, and they say that criminalizing our homelessness does not work. Look at Dallas. They criminalized the homeless, and their homelessness population doubled over the past couple of years, doubled. So if we don't want to continually create more of a crisis and build upon the unhoused, we need to develop solutions, and this ordinance is not that solution.
You know, it's a very sad thing when you have people coming up so passionately. And I'd like to be able to respond, especially to this last lovely lady who made her comments, who's a survivor in cancer, that that is what she mentioned about the federal government and our state government and all parts of this. That is exactly what we've been trying to do. And that's what we are continuing to do. And if you scream every time somebody finishes talking, there's no opportunity to say, "Thank you very much for coming down and thank you for trying to help us with a solution to this enormous challenge." So I appreciate, as does counsel, every single one of you who has come here today to be part of the help and addressing the challenge rather than just creating more anxiety, more angst. And so, we're going to stay on this pattern of one minute. But I would appreciate... We know you support each other in this. But if there's going to be a moment to thank for good ideas and good thoughts, you take it away by your screaming after a comment. So, sir, we won't start your minute until after you say your name and where you reside. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, counsel. My name is Dean Perkins. I'm a citizen of Nevada. Currently, I am a homeless resident of the city of Las Vegas. There's a comprehensive solution currently on file with Judge Corey in the Eighth District right this moment. I implore you to not pass this ordinance or you will double the state's legal issue that is currently on the docket. I won't even get into you. It's just so confusing to me, what's so hard about building three or four strategically-located bathhouses in a chow hall? I mean, we feed you. We clothe you. Can I yield back the rest of my time?
My name is Justin Roberts. I'm a citizen of Nevada, residency of Nevada. I want to speak on the behalf of the people of Las Vegas. I've been doing a lot of community services to those out in the community. And over the past few years, I've been seeing a lot of discrepancies with how our state has been treating these homeless people on the streets. And we need to do something about it. And with this ordinance in place, it's not going to solve anything. There's a lot of things that we can implement, but we need to gather as people together and figure this out, one thing at a time, before we just jump the gun and start addressing it by having these people locked away, put in cells, being fed non-approved FDA, HDA drugs, whatever they're trying to do to get them off of whatever they're on, just to get them back into the social life of being a citizen. It's not the way to go. It's not the way to go. So I just want to say that we-
And sir, could you give us your name, please, and where you reside?
My name is Justin Roberts, and I reside in Las Vegas, Nevada.
Where?
East Las Vegas, Nevada.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay, that's all right. Okay, I'm sorry to keep you waiting, please. Yes, so-
Hello, oh, that's fine.
No, wait, if you would, sir, please. And the only thing is, are you, are you able to, to address during Agenda Item 62? We're not taking anybody that's spoken already, will not be allowed to address, as I've said three times, when the Agenda Item 62 is heard. So you're not going to be able to wait?
I am not, no. Yeah, I'm not able to.
Okay, please then state your name and where you reside.
Good morning, Mayor and Council, I'm Arnold Stock, and I'm founder of Veterans Village here in Las Vegas. My, I reside at 191 Cliff Valley Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. And, is my, are we going now?
Okay, you're going. Can you start him right now? He just breathed and that's what's what, we don't count that.
So, I really welcome, and I love to see so many people that are concerned about housing and the homeless, I'd love to see more of this. It's healthy, this debate is healthy, this is not unhealthy. You wouldn't see this anywhere else in the world, believe me, folks. And this is great, and I'm glad to see everybody here today. The only way we're going to solve a homeless problem in this city or in this nation is by building affordable housing with supportive services, period. We will never see this problem solved, this, the cannon's been kicked down the road for years, we didn't get here overnight, and we're not going to solve this thing overnight. And so I'm all in favor of doing a master plan with funding, with specific annual dollars put to this master plan that's developed within the community to end homelessness, period. For me, it's end of discussion, I've been at this for 42 years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jovan Jackson, and I live at 6764 Felipe Allen. I'm born and raised in Las Vegas, and I want to talk about the solutions. Criminalizing poverty is not a solution, criminalizing homelessness is not a solution, throwing these individuals in jails creates no solution. Where do you think these individuals go once they are released? This only creates a revolving door. This ordinance will become costly, not with police services, but also with court services. And now we are forcing more roles on our police agencies. This only brings more attention between the public and public safety. A majority of homeless are suffering from mental conditions and call, and have delusions. And now we're having armed police with no background in social work or mental health, which can lead to a situation that no one wants to see or intended to happen. As we've seen across the nation, that officers' distressions can lead to the death of an innocent. We don't need that in Las Vegas. That is not Vegas strong. We need more housing, we need more mental health services, we need more substance abuse counseling, we need more shelters for all populations, and we definitely need more unwalled shelters because there is a such thing as chronically homeless.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and we agree with you. Thank you. Well done.
Good morning, my name's Denise Maraz, and I'm with Don, California, or Nevada. We had an article this morning in the-
And where do you, I'm sorry, what did you-
I, I live in Clark County in Mountain Springs.
Thank you very much.
In the Las Vegas Tribune this morning, we addressed this, and you can see the full information there. I implore this council to look into the SOTA program all across America, and you'll get a chance to address this on November 20th if you attend the Austin-based urban, it's called the National League of Cities meeting. I ask you to look to your peers and tell them that SOTA programs, which is special one-time assistance programs where they go seek out homeless in their own cities, they give them $3,000 to $4,000 cash and a bus ticket, anywhere they want to go in the United States. This is going on in New York, it's going on in other cities, especially where it's getting cold. Then they're going to come anywhere they want to go. They'll just increase that line the next time we have this conversation. So I ask you to do that, and also consider a task force that addresses the concerns of the fellow before me who spoke, that we need a task force instead of our police who are-
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, please.
I'll maintain my dignity. My name's Rebel, I live in North Las Vegas.
And if you would speak into the, or pull the microphone closer.
So I'll maintain my dignity, my name's Rebel, I live in North Las Vegas. I know these liberals that say, "No justice, no peace," have an issue when they hear a naughty word, so apparently that's not going to go anywhere. So we have a big issue in this city with corruption, and that's sitting right here. We have, you guys spend five and a half million dollars every year that you extort from working people on arresting innocent sex workers and people of volatile acts down at the Strip, and I have to pass by tents and tents and tents every single day that I leave the house, and why is this money not being sent, being spent on things like that? You can alleviate 20% of our, of our homeless population in a single year if you re-appropriated that money, $5,500 stipends to 1,000 different homeless families. And instead of doing that, you're building prisons. You're not doing anything to help the people of Las Vegas. And this is a big issue, in, in the same city with Sheriff Lombardo, who covered up six homicides just to win his election, we have the same, the same police force, and that, that's not a lie either, you can look it up, and the same police force-
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, please. Next, please, you're not on, thank you.
My name is Glenn Honsucker. I live in Las Vegas, I'm not going to give you my exact address, not to publicize to everyone. Many are homeless because of losing everything at legally rigged casino games. The way to reduce the homeless population is to have casinos stop using rigged games such as tapered playing cards and a shuffling technique called stripping the cards. I understand this is unlikely because you and the media protect the casino industry, not the consumer or the homeless. The legally rigged games that you and the media protect are the very cause of many homeless. And now, you want to punish the victim of rigged games for not knowing the games are rigged? I am amazed. Thank you for allowing me my 60 seconds of free speech.
My name is Carl David, and I live in North Las Vegas. We do lots of work to help feed the homeless, and we're trying to organize efforts to make sure they're able to get in homes. And for a solid year, we have had difficulties from law enforcement and from the city of Las Vegas, and now there is an ordinance to criminalize homeless people living out on the street because they know, have nowhere else to go. You're criminalizing compassion and you're criminalizing survival. There was a time when people had a word for this, and that word is tyranny.
Hello, my name is Brooke Fetter. I'm a Summerlin homeowner, but from 2014 to 2017, I lived downtown at The Jewel. My summary is actions have unintended consequences, and I'd like to cite an example from our own city history. In 2014, my husband and I were living in a beautiful penthouse at The Jewel, and we were living advocates for downtown life. We walked nearly every day, I never felt unsafe. Some of my neighbors were homeless, many times they were actually the faces that caused me to feel safe. Sometime three years later, our quality of life downtown changed significantly with a single act. Overnight armrests, actually bars, were installed on the benches, preventing anybody from being able to lie down on the bench. From that moment, the nature of my life downtown changed. I could no longer feel humanity when seeing human beings lying on the ground. My walk had to be punctuated by avoiding people.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, my name is Gerald Gillock, business at 428 South Fourth Street. I think that, I urge you not to pass this ordinance, it's a total camouflage for doing nothing. The ordinance is a sham, it doesn't require the city to provide any facilities, any sanitation facilities, any medical, any counseling, any transportation. It doesn't require the city to do one single thing. And to criminalize the behavior doesn't accomplish anything, and not only that, you have a provision for not including, not even enforcing that. But it doesn't require you to put up a toilet, it doesn't require you to put up a bathroom, a place to wash their hands, a place to dispose of their sanitation issues, and I think the city should not pass this ordinance, but should get busy and do something to create sanitation facilities. That's the issue.
My name is Eva Love, and I live in Desert Shores, and I've been a citizen here for 20 years. And I believe that this ordinance that's being proposed is absolutely wrong. There is nothing being done to actually give housing or help with housing. If you look at Salt Lake, they built a whole area of tiny houses, and they don't have a homeless problem now. We have buildings downtown that are empty, that could be gutted, and they could build little 200 square foot apartments, and you could house, you know, a few thousand with doing that. We need housing, not handcuffs.
Buenos dias, my name is Jose Solario, I reside at 3328 Appenzell Court, Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm here to represent Hispanics in politics, 30-year organization here in Las Vegas. We oppose the ordinance. We do applaud the mayor for bringing the issue before us, but the solutions should not include this ordinance. We believe it's a cruel and unusual punishment, in that the poor are more adversely affected and are less able to pay a $1,000 fine or to live in jail for six months, which would, by the way, cost us about $30,000 in taxpayer funds. So, so we believe that the solution is to table this, come together, look for credible solutions that help us and not hurt us, and you would have the full support of the community if we can come together, come up with the, the correct solution. But please, don't shackle us, don't chain us, you know, don't handcuff us, help us. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and City Council, my name is Arash Kafuri, I'm the executive director of Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth, and my business is in Vegas, but I live in Henderson, if that matters. Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth cannot support any bill that will potentially result in homeless youth being arrested. Homeless youth are homeless youth that are minors and also young adults, 18 through 24, depending on the definition. Our community has less than 25% of the beds needed to meet current demand of this youth population, and two, the courtyard is not an appropriate setting for homeless families or children or youth. The bill could result in young adults having criminal record, creating barriers throughout their life, and giving them a scarlet letter that could affect their future employment, public benefits, including education, and even securing housing. The city will not be able to arrest its way out of our local homelessness problem. We do not have enough adequate, diversified, and safe resources for all types of homeless populations. Part of the issue is that the courtyard may not even be safe for homeless families and childrens or youth. I don't believe this bill has been well thought out in terms of logistics and blowback. Homeless individuals are actually experts on knowing what they need. Homeless service providers are fighting this battle every day.
I'm sorry, our clerk did not get, I heard you, and I know exactly how you work, and you've been so helpful to the community. If you would, for our clerk, repeat your name, sir, and where you live, which I heard you say.
Oh, boy. My name is Arash, A-R-A-S-H, last name G-H-A-F as in Frank, O-O-R-I, and the executive director of Nevada Partnership for Homeless Youth.
Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. No, no, the minute's gone. Thank you, next, thank you. No, sorry, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, my name is Emily Paulson, I'm a resident of Ward 5-
Wait, can we do that again? Let's not start the minute, because I can't, what she was saying, we couldn't hear it, so please, if you would.
My name is Emily Paulson, I'm a resident in Ward 5 of Las Vegas, Nevada. I'm the executive director of the Nevada Homeless Alliance and co-chair of the Southern Nevada Homelessness Continuum of Care. The Nevada Homeless Alliance urges you to scrap this bill, it is not in alignment with our regional plan, you did not consult with regional leaders on this, and therefore you crafted a very poor policy, ma'am. And it puts our, it puts our federal funding at risk. HUD discourages communities from ordinance like this because it's a waste of scarce public resources, and it hurts people from getting off the street, it does not help them get off the street, it makes their situation worse. And for that reason, we ask you to scrap this bill, come back to the table with the regional leaders who are invested in solving this issue with you, and use their expertise, and include homeless people at that table.
Hello, council members, Mayor Goodman, my name is Hunter Kane, I'm a candidate for Clark County Commission, District C, and I live in Charleston Heights, Las Vegas, Nevada.
All right, wait, can we give him his full, please, thank you. Please, sir.
I, I'll be honest, I was kind of surprised when I heard that this ordinance was coming down. Mayor, I've worked with you quite, quite often on different things with Arnie and some other different people with the homeless. We know that this is not effective. We know that it's going to cost a lot more money than it's necessary, we know that it's going to tax the police and emergency services, we know that it's going to fill up the prison system, we, we know these things already. What I would do is I would challenge you to work actually with other governmental agencies. When I was working in the congressional office, we caught often worked partner with partner. I would say put this on the county, the state of Nevada, North Las Vegas, Henderson, all of you guys come together, sit at a table, and come up with a different solution. The number one issue that, when I'm talking to home builders and things like that, is that they want to build affordable housing. They want to build it, they will willingly build it. The problem is, is that the cost of the land, the cost that the city and that the county puts on all these different lands is what's stopping them from doing it, to include even Arnie. I would say make it tax exempt for 10 years, see if they can't come out here and build it. I would say think something outside the box. And I would also ask, you know, Councilman Anthony, you, you've kind of looked up only when it proved your interest?
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Howard Watts, and I'm a proud resident of Ward 3, and I'm also proud to represent Assembly District 15 in Nevada Legislature. For the sake of time, first of all, I want to speak on a different measure, which is the proposal to purchase and restore the Huntridge Theater, which will come up later, which I'm fully in support of, I'm just not able to stay here until that comes up. Now, to this matter at hand, I've already communicated with a couple of members, and I think that what Arash and Emily said was spot on, so I'm not going to repeat that. One of the concerns that I really have is that, as has been stated, this is not going to solve the problem, it's going to move it around, and I'm concerned that it's going to just move outside of the limited enforcement area into other parts of our communities, and I, I don't think that's fair. I also know that there's been a lot of conversation about the state legislature's role, and we have asked for the city to work with all the other local governments, business members, and community organizations to come up with a plan, and we are committed to helping deliver the resources to make sure that we can address homelessness and provide everyone the services that they need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Lupi Guzman. I'm becoming from brain cancer.
And, and where do you live now?
I live in Marble Manor, 101 James Street.
Yes.
Down the street.
Yes.
I live down the street from the Mission, and homeless population is getting bigger every day. In 2010, I lost my job, I lost my home, and I'm a single mom on six. I was homeless for three years, and I was struggling, and it was hard, and there was, there wasn't that many places for me to go. So, living hotel to motel, no family to help, just friends. We just need, it's a building, casinos and expensive houses, but that money took good use to our communities, to families. Homeless, they're not just drug addicts or addicts, they're regular people that fell on bad times. I didn't want to become homeless, it happened, but now I'm living in a good home, and I'm happy. Just show compassion.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Diaz, I was homeless, I was at the courtyard. It was horrible to stay there, very horrible. Conditions are unbelievable. Putting us in, in handcuffs, no. It's actually against the U.S. Constitution. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Felipe Silva, I'm the Housing Justice Organizer for Make the Road, Nevada.
And you live where, sir?
And my address is 370 Casa Norte Drive, North Las Vegas.
Thank you.
So, Nevada has been dealing with a housing crisis that we know has been on top of us for a while. We have these fancy casinos and this brand new stadium, but this is almost like a slap in the face to the hardworking families of Nevada that are actually, you know, getting a short end of the stick on this. Ordinances like this do not help the, fix the homeless problem, and you know this, and that's what sucks, that- sucks, that all you know this, and it's still going forward today. And we're proud, Make the Road is proud to call Ward 3 its home in East Las Vegas, and we hope to our leadership that they will do the right thing on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Harry Batiste. At Las Vegas, I'm homeless, so Las Vegas is my home, the whole entire city. That's my address, Las Vegas, because I can live anywhere in Las Vegas because I'm homeless, at a house near as you. So understand these things. As I told the former Mayor Goodman, that there was a place that God had prepared. See, that was a man named Jesus who hung up on a cross, and when he died, he went to hell, and he took the keys from the devil. He took the keys, and the devil said, "I'm gonna close the door." He says, "That's right, it's always open." And I told Mr. Goodman, "Now, Ms. Goodman, there's a place down there beneath the sidewalk, way down deep." So remember, in Acts, in the Book of Acts, Man 10:11, told Stephen he was gonna go sell his property, and he told his wife, "We gonna tell him we sold it for this or for that." And when he came and he told that lie, he died. His wife came and told that lie, and he said, "You can go be better with your husband." So I already told your husband, your husband, hell is waiting on him, so you can combine yourselves with it, as God have already said.
My name is Hugh Lee.
Yes, again, I couldn't quite hear you. If you'd repeat your name.
Hello. My name is Hugh Lee.
Excuse me. Wait, we won't count this. You know, you're each having a chance, and this gentleman is waiting. Marshals, could you ask this gentleman to leave, please?
Well, that's something I can't compare to.
I'm sorry. I mean, they're not giving you the courtesy. They're just wrong. So please, go ahead. Your name and where you live.
Hi. My name is Hugh Lee. My zip code is 89103, and I live within the Chinatown district. As a former homeless youth in 2011, I wanted to say this ordinance is not really supportive for me or people I known on my way up back out from being homeless. And the only thing I got to say is just that I think this is more prevalent in North Las Vegas than East Las Vegas, that we should build communities for the lives of people before the lives of people take upon the community, so, yeah.
Appreciate.
My name is Nisa San, and I am a resident of Clark County. I'm the editor-in-chief of the Fourth Trajectory Project, a media organization focused on policing nationwide and here in Las Vegas. As an investigative journalist working on policing issues nationwide for the last 10 years in multiple communities across the nation, I have to say, having been here for just a few years, I have never seen a municipality so drenched in corruption. Do I have your attention? From the police department all the way to the courts, the judges, the DA, and all of you, the city council. The lack of affordable housing issue is very much a policing issue. I want everyone to know and understand that people living with disabilities, people who are economically vulnerable, and communities of color are constantly and intentionally policed while having the dominant culture, the haves, so to speak, hide in their homes and continuously ignore this very serious human rights and civil rights issue. 95% of police murder victims, police murder victims, make less than $30,000 per year. This is an attack on --
Thank you. Okay, excuse me. Wait a minute. Marshall? Marshall, would you excuse this lady here in the first, second, third row? Out. You speak out every single time. You are discourteous. Not having it anymore. We will recess this if you don't get up and leave right now. Okay, next, please. And again, I'm so sorry. Excuse me. Excuse me. Anybody? You may go right out also. Sir, you were out, yes, out the door, please. No, please, right now. And Marshall, would you escort him out? We're not going to have this. These individuals that have come here to address this council politely and with decorum are going to be heard, and you are not going to be heard out the door. Please, ma'am, your name and where you live.
Yes. Good morning. I'm Shalimar Cabrera. I'm a resident of Ward 6, and I'm the Executive Director of US Vets.
Thank you.
It was just four years ago, Mayor Goodman, that we stood in celebration of declaring functional zero among veteran homelessness here in Las Vegas, and we asked you at this time to remember the commitment you made to ending veteran homelessness.
And we're working.
To do so will be not through handcuffs, but through more housing. We know that the solution is affordable housing and permanent supportive housing.
Yes.
At US Vets, we're seeing 88% of the veterans we're serving maintaining their housing, becoming tax-paying citizens, and not returning to homelessness.
Yes.
Your ordinance is proposing to fine or jail veterans sitting on the very streets that they fought to defend, and our city can do better. Our city can do better. We need positive partnerships, not punitive measures. We invite you all to consider delaying this decision today so that we can be a part of this conversation as homeless service providers, because we feel we have been left out until this point. We believe we can come to true solutions, and we ask you to consider that this morning. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Armina McCarrian, 4322 Boulder Highway, 89121. I'm the Executive Director of Lutheran Social Services of Nevada, a homeless provider in our community, and I wanted to first of all address the audience here that by yelling and screaming, we cannot make any decisions together. Please stop being disrespectful towards our own government. And we worked for more than 11 years, I've been the Executive Director of this organization, and City of Las Vegas has been one of our best partners and still is, and I know how much the council and you, Mayor, care about our community. All I am asking is, can you please give us an opportunity as providers to just meet with you separately and discuss other solutions? That's all I am saying, and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Pilar Thompson. I am the owner of a company called No Kids in Cars. I'm a federal lobbyist, and I like to also --
And you live where, ma'am?
I live at 3751 Shirebrook Drive, apartment 44.
I know where you are. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I just want to let you know, I'm from California, Los Angeles, to be exact, where they have 70,000 people living on the street. And what I've seen is during the election cycle, we clean it up, we put it up under carpet so that you guys can get the votes. It's not going down this time, mama. If you don't help us to help them so that we can get the problem solved, we're not going to vote for you, or you, or you, or you. Understand? No more, ma'am. I'm sorry, no more.
Thank you.
I've seen this political chess piece game, working for 40 years in California, and now we have the homeless population so tough, but we have all these people living up on the street that we're not saying anything about. Okay? So let's get everybody off of the street, get everybody off of the covers, and help them out, okay? Good looking out. Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
My name is Dr. Santarpia McNeil. I live on Cielo Lane in Las Vegas. I coordinate a program at CSN, and I have several homeless students who are all basically A students. If this ordinance is passed and they're arrested, this is going to ruin their lives. They're able to be A students, and they're homeless. Not only that, I came from New York where I was the coordinator for homelessness and mental health for the mayor's office, and I've never seen anything like this in my life. I'm able to help homeless people in my position. I called all the agencies. I had a homeless family, and with the contacts that I made personally, I was able to get the family help. So this is a disgrace, and that's all I have to say.
Ma'am, can you repeat your name? I'm so sorry. Can you repeat your name for us? Can you repeat it in the microphone?
Sure. Thank you. Santarpia, Dr. Santarpia McNeil.
Oseyo. Hari dasishto. I'm a Cherokee Nation and Choctaw Nation.
Okay. And again, repeat your name, please. Repeat your name, please.
Okay. My name is Joseph Cooper. Okay. I'm part of the Cherokee and Choctaw Nation.
Okay. And where do you reside?
Yes, I'm here to say the company here. What I have to say is that when you retreat the people of your community, they're gonna leave. I have been told by 200 businessmen, I'm a small businessman myself, they're concerned saying that if you just retreat these people, they're gonna leave Las Vegas. That's gonna hurt your economy, okay? First of all, then you disrespecting me as a grown man, as a businessman. My family from both of those soldiers and all that built this country. If you don't allow this people to live the way they live, go back what you come from. Don't come over in our country and disrespect our city and people. They gotta live the way that you live. Remember how you got here? The way you got in that seat, the way they're gonna push you out. Just think about it, just same what I did. I've become a businessman. My people helped me got what I'm at today. I have to retreat them, respect them too. Without them, you will not be no mayor. See what I'm saying? It's a token that you have to take. Don't be your people. I don't want my family to scream. How you think they family feel? So I'm just saying to you --
Thank you very much.
I got left my business up.
Thank you.
If I land doing this, I will.
Thank you.
Work with me. Give me a call. I will.
Next, please. Thank you. Hi.
My name is Linda Evans. I reside in North Las Vegas. I'm here representing ACLU for one reason, and the other reason is to speak on behalf of the homeless families, veterans, and seniors. I worked with homeless families, veterans, and seniors in downtown Los Angeles for about 20 years. I relocated here last year, and I did some volunteer work at several of the homeless family shelters last winter. What I learned there was that there's no place for them to sleep. When women and their children would come to the center, they'd line up early in the day to get a bed, and there's a cutoff time. It only took an average of 20 families, and what I had to do was turn these women and children away into the street. When I learn that now that they're on the street, they will be criminalized and fined for being on the street when there's no place else to go. I would want to bring to your attention that if they had the $1,000, they would probably have a room. The other thing is if you put them in jail and they're with their children, what you're doing is separating their children, putting them in foster care, the mother goes in jail, then she gets out, and her problem has been compounded exponentially.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Sorry, I wish we could give you more time.
I'm Dr. Ray McFarland. I work at the center as the trans program manager. I just want to say, a huge amount of time that we spend serving people at the center is working on jobs and homelessness. In so many ways, there are reasons that people are unstable, that people are destabilized by health crisis, by poverty, by abuse, by discrimination. 40% of homeless youth are queer youth that are often leaving unsupportive or unsafe houses or being kicked out. By criminalizing sleeping on the street, you're taking people who are already in very vulnerable positions and complicating it. I'm sure you've heard that in a million different iterations today, but then complicating their ability to get jobs, their ability to go home, their ability to recover their own dignity and their own stability. There's often situations where people are, you know, we work with the courtyard, we work with Salvation Army, we work helping people to get to the existing services, and they are not enough. The courtyard, these agencies that know that they're going to be helping and receiving people, they know that there's onslaught is coming and that there's not a capacity for it. We need to actually have services, especially between --
Thank you very much. You're right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
My name is Maurice Schickler. I live in Las Vegas, 89183. Marilyn Goodman, I gave you a proposal for our organization, Home Las Vegas. It is an organization, charity, 501(c)(3) that I started to train the homeless people to do construction work so they could build their own place to live. And when you build your own place to live, then you have a vested interest in it, and you will not allow people to destroy it. But we never heard from you. We didn't hear from the city of Henderson. We didn't hear from North Las Vegas. Nobody wants it in their backyard. We asked for a piece of land. If we have a piece of land, we will get it off the ground, but we can't do it without a piece of land, and without that, we can't do fundraising. 6,400 people in 2018 were on the streets, 1,650 homeless families. If we had 10%, that's 600 people who could start. If we didn't have 10%, we had 1%, we have 60 people who are willing to learn how to do construction work and do something to change their lives, throwing --
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Latoya Hardwell.
I'm sorry.
Is my mic on?
Could you take off your hat, please? And then would you be good enough to repeat your name and your address so we have it for the record? Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Latoya Hardwell. I'm not from Vegas, and I'm glad I'm not from here. I'm from Toledo, Ohio. I challenge all of y'all to go to the courtyard and spend one night in the courtyard, the same how y'all sitting up here laughing at these people, just as God gave it to you, he could take it away.
Next, please.
My name is John Butner. I'm a resident of Las Vegas since 2011. Currently, I'm staying at the courtyard. I just became homeless after coming back after a year somewhere else. But I'm part of the working homeless, and three quick issues I want to speak with about the working homeless. One, you don't make enough to pay rent, deposit, and everything else they want you to pay for, deposit for lights and things. Two, you get off work, no matter how many hours you work, you come back to this place that you get treated like in a hostile environment because they're treating you like you're lesser than them. Security guards, coworkers there, shoot, volunteers at these places, especially the courtyard. Three, and they have work verification, but even that's 50/50, because if you go to any of these shelters and you don't get the right paperwork, or you're not back and forth letting your job know you're homeless, it's like you don't have a chance of even getting a bed that night, and you'll end up on the street anyway, and then you'll end up getting fined, and because you got a job, there's going to be some expectation of you to pay it, so.
Thank you. Stay with it. Keep trying. Thank you. Thank you. Keep trying.
60 seconds.
No, that wasn't it. Sorry, we can't.
What's the argument for this? What's the argument for this argument?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm Phila O'Reilly. I'm the CEO of Help a Southern Nevada, and I live in Henderson. This morning, 500 formerly homeless clients woke up in a Help a Southern Nevada program bed. 108 of those were at Shannon West Homeless Youth Center. So I come to you today on behalf of those clients, and I speak to you as one of your community partners. I urge you, do not pass this ordinance. Please don't do this. If, at the very least, if you could delay it and actually bring together some of your community partners to offer more solutions and work in partnership, for that, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is John Piero. I'm a resident of Mayor Pro Tem Fiori's district. If I may, I'm a public defender that works downtown here, so I'll be representing the people that you arrest with this ordinance. I will tell you that we cannot incarcerate our way out of this public health crisis. Your community partners have now come to you and asked you to find a different solution. What I'm asking you is go back to the table and draw that. Also, to say that this ordinance will have no fiscal impact is, at best, irresponsible and, at worst, disingenuous, because it costs $170 a day to house somebody at the Clark County Detention Center, and it's gonna cost money to house them at the jail. Money that could be better spent on evidence-based solutions to work on a public health crisis instead of treating people as if they're disposable. I ask you to widen the circle of compassion and let those people in.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. For the record, my name is Annette Magnus, and I'm the Executive Director of Battle Born Progress, and I live in Mountain's Edge. I'm here representing our over 20,000 subscribers statewide. We stand in strong opposition to the proposed ordinance, which will criminalize homeless people across the city of Las Vegas. As a Las Vegas native and as someone that has worked in politics, I have to say this is the most disgusting and embarrassing policy I have ever seen. Rather than working with the county and other agencies here today to produce a regional strategy to invest in real resources to aid persons experiencing homelessness with substance abuse issues, mental health issues, healthcare, housing solutions, and more, we are discussing a proposal to simply lock people up in our community. Many folks are one healthcare emergency or rise in prescription drug price away from a financial disaster, and this ordinance will not help anyone. This action is more costly in the long run, overburden already stretched law enforcement agencies, and break down the trust between caseworkers and the communities they serve. Furthermore, there is reason to believe this policy-
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mary Behan, and I live in 89149. I've lived in Las Vegas for 24 years, and I've been a nurse here for 13 years. I was briefly homeless as a youth, and had it been criminalized and I had a criminal record, I would not have been able to get my nursing license. Also, as a nurse and providing care for my community, I have to provide care on evidence-based practice. I believe the same standards should be held for the city in caring for our community. Study after study has proven that criminalization of homelessness is not the solution. You have to do better.
Good morning. My name's David Marlin. I live at 383 Wooden Gate. I want to say two things. One, thank you very much, each of you, for your service. Second, I believe that for treatment-resistant, chemically-dependent people, that a homeless specialty court could be a very effective part of the solution, and I appreciate each of your bravery. Thank you.
Good morning, Council members. For the record, my name is Quentin Savoie. I am a resident of unincorporated Clark County. However, I work downtown at the corner of 7th and Bonneville for Make It Work Nevada. We organize Black and Brown people, and this is a dehumanizing ordinance that dehumanizes and underserves the community of Las Vegas. In the interest of not being duplicitous and repeating what other folks have said, this ordinance is not good. And it's not good because some of the most vile tropes that have been circulating about this ordinance are that the public needs to be protected from unhoused people, when in fact, Las Vegas has consistently been ranked as one of the most dangerous places for unhoused people, and that's according to the National Coalition for Homelessness between studies from 2003 to 2018. So I just want to implore you to do better and see people differently, because when we change the way we look at things, the things we look at change. Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Dirk Ravenholt, longtime resident of Nevada, live in Las Vegas. I want to say first, thanks for bringing this to the forefront, but I think you should table this. The right to liberty and the pursuit of happiness cannot be criminalized. These folks have no choice but being homeless at the time. I think the money you'll spend in the system, and I deal with the system every day as an attorney, in the courts, in the law enforcement, enforcement, and the determination whether there's going to be houses, shelter, beds available, is ill-spent, and you should do a cost comparison to what you'll be spending in housing and in enforcement, to what you could spend towards the homeless shelter situation. But other than that, I wish you luck. Thank you.
Yes, morning.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman and City Councilman. My name is Pauline Ng Lee, and I've lived in Las Vegas for 22 years. I'm a frequent volunteer at Catholic Charities and the Salvation Army, and I'm in support of the ordinance because it does not criminalize the homelessness. The ordinance does not displace the homeless. Rather, it makes it prohibitive to encamp on private property when there's room at the Corridor Homeless Resource Center, also known-
Excuse me.
This is a practical first step.
Mrs. Lee, excuse me one second, please. Would you credit her back that time that you all have taken away from her? So please, go back and give her the time, please. No, if you're not gonna be courteous, if you're not gonna be courteous, we are listening to both sides here, and that's what you need to do. Listen to both sides. This is a very, very serious challenge. You know, we can just go into recess if you are not gonna be courteous to other human beings. All right, out. Please, take him out. Please, out. Listen, we're not having this anymore. You don't treat fellow human beings- No. Out you go. Sorry. We're not having this. Excuse me. Okay, would you start? Let Mrs. Lee again. I'm sorry, too, I didn't get your residence, where you live. Thank you.
I live in Las Vegas for the last 22 years.
Thank you.
And I volunteer relentlessly over at Catholic Charities and at the Salvation Army. Serving the homeless is something that I do because I want to help and because I want to improve our community on a regular basis. That's why I'm here. The bill is very clear, I'm also an attorney. The bill is very clear that if the shelters are full, that the police cannot arrest the homeless, and I think that's very important to me, because I don't want the homeless arrested. They are citizens, and we need to protect them, period. And it's a first step to making sure that they are protected from the weather and from criminal elements. If the corridor is not safe, we have to make it safe. That's a first step. I'm also very concerned about the health hazards. We've already had two cases of hepatitis A, which was eliminated through childhood inoculations.
I'm sorry. That's out of time. Thank you for coming down.
My name is Lynn Lombardi. I live in Spring Valley, Las Vegas. I just would entreat all of you to listen from your heart, and sometimes it's hard when you have a job that you have to do, to kind of shut down and feel overwhelmed. But I implore you to listen from your heart and interact with the community that's come here passionately, but interact with the community because there's a lot of resources there, and there's a lot of answers and solutions. I just want to read you something a friend of mine wrote. Aloha is a word that really means that you have a deep respect and love for others regardless of the color of their skin, where we come from, or the spiritual path that we may follow. Aloha is the essence of relationships in which each person is important to every other person for collective existence. We can't marginalize people who have no choice where they live. I've come from a place where I've almost been homeless, but because of my-
So sorry, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Annalise Friedman. I live in East Las Vegas, and I'm with the Party for Socialism and Liberation, and I'm just here to say that this is a foul and inhumane ordinance, and I ask you to pull it. This bill is a blatant expression of the Las Vegas ruling business class. This is the motive force driving these anti-homelessness measures, the business owners. It has nothing to do with the safety of either the homeless themselves or the people who live and work near them, and it never has. Anyone taking a cursory look at the immense wealth that already exists in this country will see that we have more than enough of what is required to fulfill the material needs of society. We can harness full productive capacity to guarantee housing, food, healthcare, and employment to every person in Las Vegas and the United States. This is a task ahead of the US working class. We must organize and fight, because changing the streets of Las Vegas and the United States can change the streets of the world.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Daniel. I was born and raised here, lived here my whole-
No, 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 no. Daniel who, please?
Weber.
Thank you very much. And you live where? I'm sorry.
In East Las Vegas.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm also a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. I just wanted to say, it's ordinances like these which show the true nature of our government and who it truly serves. The illusion that we have a credibly representative government with democratic ideals is shown every day to be a facade. It is no secret that this bill is backed by business interests who want to take our most vulnerable members of society and put them out of mind and out of sight. Our institutions are proving themselves to be nothing but an instrument of the ruling class and of their interests, and if this blatant disrespect of the homeless, the workers, and the oppressed continue, is another day we will challenge the legitimacy of this government in favor of something truly equitable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to make a comment. I noticed some of you have come in here late after we started the public hearing. For those of you who can wait until the item 62, which we will be trailing to allow more time, if in fact you are here to speak to 52 and can wait, 62, excuse me, you will be allowed that time. For those of you who speak under this one minute, you will not be allowed to speak again when we have the public comment on 62. So just for those of you who came in late, I want you to understand, you are choosing to speak for one minute in the first public comment and not at the time we have public comment during the presentation and information and questioning on 62. So please, ma'am, if you will, announce your name and your address, and we'll go on.
Good morning. My name is Divya Narala, and I'm here representing myself and myself only. I live in Mountain's Edge, so I don't live in the city of Las Vegas, but I do work in the city of Las Vegas. Good morning, Mayor Goodman and the rest of the council members here today. I do believe that you were listening to your constituents in bringing this ordinance forward, and I believe that, and I see it, but I think there is a larger part of your constituency that was left out of this conversation. I think there are a lot of homeless service agencies, advocates, community members, faith leaders, that came out today to tell you that there are people in the community that care about the same issue that you care about as well. And I know all of you have worked with the homeless before, so you understand the problem, and you understand that there needs to be a comprehensive solution, but an ordinance such as this significantly impacts our community's ability to leverage our dollars at the federal level even, and I just urge you to just take a moment to talk to the community leaders here, convene them, talk to them about some tangible solutions that we can come together that you can agree on as well.
And could you repeat your name, please?
My name is Divya Narala.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Good morning.
Hello, I'm Rudolph Hovero, and I live in Las Vegas, Nevada, in the United States of America. Okay. If you truly believe this country is about freedom, I want you to really consider that freedom's at threat in other parts of the world, and this ordinance is just as bad of a threat. Do you, I only have one question. Are you Mayor Carolyn Goodman, or are you Chief Executive Carrie Lam? Have a good day.
Am I Chief Executive who? I don't know. Hi there. Good morning.
Hi. Good morning. My name's Ron Moore. I'm from Las Vegas, 89119. And according to the standards set forth in this bill, I've been on a four-city, three-state crime spree the last 10 years. I confess that during my homelessness, I found myself tired and sat down and even slept on the street. I speak in opposition to a bill that is punitive and redundant, is equally oppressive for the homeless community and the law enforcement community. The logistics of assessing an individual to ensure the shelter will accept them, letting the shelter know to hold the bed, then transporting them there is a waste of resources. Talk to us. Get to know us by listening to us. Homelessness is not a crisis because the homeless exist. It is a crisis because the homeless suffer. We can do better than empty gestures such as this bill. Thank you.
Good morning, Council, Mayor Goodman. For the record, my name is Benweliella, and I live in City Council Ward 3, the heart of the east side. I am the student body vice president for the College of Southern Nevada, but I'm here as an organizing fellow for the Human Rights Campaign. CSN has a number of homeless and at-risk students that would be directly affected by Bill 201936. Those people are trying to seek an education without a home that would be criminalized or completely burdened by your bill. I, as a working-class adult, wouldn't even be able to afford a $1,000 fine for sleeping outside. Not to mention the increased number of homeless LGBTQ youth, youth that aren't able to find housing, that are targets for hate crimes, that don't deserve the abuse that you would put them through if you sent them to jail. Las Vegas may have a large homeless population, but criminalizing being poor is not moral, ethical, or why we elected you. We elected you to be a champion for Las Vegas, not to send innocents to prison and not to be financially crushed, crushed our most vulnerable citizens. You are to serve every person in Las Vegas, not just the wealthy. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Nestor Martinez, 89108. I've lived in Las Vegas my entire life. It seems to me that in the 21st century, and the richest country in the world, and a city surrounded by billions of dollars, should be focused more on helping people in our community than locking them up. And I'm gonna call out for what this ordinance really is. The real purpose of this ordinance is to marginalize an entire sector of the population, which is the bottom of the working class, so that way you could take them out of society so they don't participate in our politics anymore. And let's say you don't really care about the morals of it. Not fair to say you don't really care about what happens to, you know, people at the bottom. You know, you're in your ivory towers. You don't really care. Well, you're also spending more tax money as a result, too, because then you have to prosecute these people, you gotta send them to jails, you gotta house these people, you gotta feed these people anyways. So this issue seems to me like a no-brainer. You save money through taxes, and it's the more correct thing to do.
My name is Carmela Gadsden. I live in unincorporated Clark County. I'm from Vegas, and just in the last two years, I've seen the homeless population explode as housing costs rise and continue to rise, and people cannot keep up. Our shelters are not enough. There are thousands more people who are experiencing homelessness than there are beds. So when we're talking about solutions, we have to address the fact that there are not catch-alls and safety measures in the first place. This policy also would cost our state millions in housing and urban development funding that would put a strain on our already existing revenue problems, but it costs us nothing to do the right thing. If you want to provide a solution, I suggest finding some empathy and putting yourself in the shoes of someone who cannot afford to find somewhere to sleep, find somewhere to eat, and keep a job, then have to go to jail and get back out, find another job with a record. Please do what we were electing you to do in the first place and provide solutions. Don't create more problems. I'm with Battle Born Progress, we're 21,000 strong, and we will hold you accountable if you don't vote in the sake of your heart. Thank you.
Yes, I'm pleased.
Hello, everyone. My name is Del Rio Perkins. I am a representation of YACRA, Young Adults in Charge, which is a revolution for homeless youth equality and making sure that they get sustainable housing. Standing around me is the same people that fight the good fight with me.
And excuse me, sir, before you get into this, please, if you would state your address?
My address is 2717 Aaron David Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada, Clark County. I just want to go ahead and say this right quickly. I have been a resident here for almost four years. I was facing homelessness for three years of those four, and in those four years, I had to find every crevice, every corner that I could find, traveling across the country to find a place that I could sleep at night, whether it was cold outside or whether it was hot, it didn't really matter, because all I had to find was a spot. And in that zone of me finding a spot and trying to survive in this survival mode is when I was connected to some resources that was available to youth that I was able, because I was in age range, to be able to sustain my life. I now work as a case manager. The only reason being is because I was afforded the ability to get to that place, and I wasn't able to get to that place because I was criminalized for trying to survive. And I really think that in this bill passing, the people who have the ability to stay here just like me, to have a mindset of growth, will not get that sustainable chance because we're standing here criminalizing them for trying to figure out a way to live.
Thank you for everything you've done for the homeless. We appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning. Wait one second. It's not on for some reason. If you could, there it goes. Okay, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is Shanice Edwards. I live in Las Vegas, unincorporated Clark County, and I'm a case manager with the Nevada Partnership of Homeless Youth. About every day, I see about 30 teens, children, their parents that are experiencing homelessness, and I drastically dispute that this ordinance would help in any way. The courtyard does not have sufficient sanitation, capacity, blankets, resources to be able to disperse to the rest of the homeless-
Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
Hi. Good morning. My name is Tasha Heath. I'm with Southern Nevada Watch Dogs. I am a local activist, business owner, and Las Vegas resident for the past 19 years. I am strongly opposed to this ordinance, but many of the good people here today have spoken, and they have spoken well about the issues with this. I think the one thing, and I may be repeating, I showed up a little late, but I did try to watch, I think the one thing that I would ask is that you not add more. So I'm not asking you for any more. I'm asking you to use the marijuana money that you've already said that you will to take the initiative that Salt Lake City has and use it to build homes to provide for people. I'm also asking you to stop, to stop gentrifying downtown. That is the reason why we have the homelessness issue that we have today, and that is on you guys, city and county and state. Gentrifying downtown was the worst thing because they had actual affordable housing, and you took that away, you gave it to Zappos, and you gentrified the city.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Jason Ellis. I live in Las Vegas, Nevada. Aside from this, this is being a cruel and unusual punishment, basically. In Idaho, there was a camping ban very similar, and it went to the Supreme Court, and it was overturned because they ruled it as unconstitutional or a cruel and unusual punishment. Because when the shelters are full, like the courtyard is almost always around 90, at least 90% full, and a lot of homeless, you know, they are in survival mode, and they just need a place to sit down and sleep, especially in the winter, they need to find a spot, and just to get them out of view, like out of people's eyesight is not going to solve the problem at all. Arresting people does not solve problems. When they tried it in LA with the gangs, the more arrests they made, the more the problems grow, the more people keep coming in and out of jail, and it'll take on the budget even more and be more costs. And you see how many community leaders are against this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. My name is Ray Fox, Las Vegas, Nevada, Summerlin. Okay. There is not a you or a me. There is only an us. To believe otherwise is living an ego. So I ask, where is your heart? Where is your soul? At the end of this soul journey, we will feel the collective's pain, and you guys have the power to make a difference. You reap what you sow, whether it's in this lifetime or the next. So I ask of you to put yourself in each other's shoes and do what is right for the whole. Our only mission on earth is to be of service to others and not ourselves.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Good morning, Mayor Todd. Good morning, Mayor Todd Kessler, 300 Las Vegas Boulevard North. I want to take the opportunity to commend and applaud everyone that came out here today. We only came out here for one reason, that's because we care, right? They care, we care, we all care, and that's what we have to start remembering, folks. What makes this the greatest city in the world? It's us. It's us. It's us. And it starts here, folks, whether you think so or not. It starts here. We have one of the greatest leaders ever to exist here. We have a great staff. We have a great council. This is, the only thing I'm going to say here today is that I applaud and commend them for taking action, whether it's the right action or the wrong action, to take action. It brings us here today, and if we can't all agree on a plan...
Can you use the microphone?
Never, ever agree. Sorry?
If you, I mean, if you could speak into the microphone...
Oh, sorry. I was trying to speak to the public to try and act civil.
I know you're speaking to everyone here, including us. If you could give him the credit back of the time I took away, give him back 30 seconds, please.
Okay. And simply, we're all here because we care and we have compassion, and we all have taken this opportunity to get together and create something together rather than keep factioned. There are plans, there are methods, there are ideas that came here today at the deos. There are plans and methods and means in other cities that have been used. I'll drive in with attention to Measure H in Los Angeles. It is the most funded, most metric-based proposal that's ever existed. I ask you to take your attention to that, and you can see how, if you come up with a plan and comes up with metrics, it can work. Again, I ask that we all work together, because we are the greatest city in the world. What makes us the greatest city in the world? It's us, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, ma'am.
Lisa Ortega, 4626 La Fonda Drive.
Thank you.
Shadow of Samstown, is what I like to call it. I'm running for State Assembly, District 18. I hope that you don't pass this and that we can unwind the conversations. Maybe is it SNRPC, because it seems like it's a valley-wide issue, certainly. Let's not wait for the federal government. Let's not wait for them to figure it out. We have to be progressive here. This is the time. Bring everybody together, bring all these nonprofits together, get them under SNRPC, and let's build solutions, because the hate, I ain't going to get it. Excuse my English.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor. My name is Cesare Devaney. I'm a licensed childcare provider for 21 years in North, outside of North Las Vegas, 89115.
Thank you.
I just want to bring it to your attention that the homeless is also due because of wrongful foreclosure. I've been in the courts for over 10 years fighting foreclosure, and they sold my house July 22nd, after 33 years of being in it, and I was not delinquent. So it needs to start with your government and the way they represent for themselves and others. Even though I wasn't delinquent, I lost my house. I'm still in it. I'm still in it, but I'm going to get a three-day notice to get out, and then I'll be homeless. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, I appreciate everyone who has spoken, who has cared to come down here and express what's in your heart, your mind, and your soul, and I can assure you that this council has been involved with the homeless situation and the councils before it for over 20 years and beyond that, but I can only speak of the past 20 years, and I can speak for the loyalty and devotion and caring for humanity and what's right and the laws and everything else from this council. Now, we have a full agenda today. For any of you who've already spoken, be mindful, please, that when we get to Agenda 62, you will be precluded from making comment. And so we have a full presentation, but we have the people of our community who've been waiting very patiently now to address on their issues. So we are going to move on and move through this as quickly as we can. We're moving on. I'm going to close the first public comment, and we're going to move on to Agenda Item 9.
No. Can you wait one second, Mayor?
Yes. Technology is never as good as people. I'm sure that's what you're waiting for. Is it? Are we good?
Is it ready?
To refresh our computers? Okay. Give us one second, please. Okay. Here we go. Is everybody ready? And, okay. This is Agenda Item 9, Business Item for Possible Action. Any items from this morning's session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The following items have been requested to be held in abeyance, withdrawn, or stricken. Item 30, Compliance Permit for Retail Marijuana Store for Essence Tropicana LLC, DBA Essence at 2307 South Las Vegas Boulevard. Requested by staff is to strike. And Item 42, Condemnation Action for Purchase of Property Rights for the Charleston Boulevard Streetscape Improvement Project, Martin Luther King Boulevard's Rancho Drive Abeyance to January 15, 2020. Meeting is requested by staff, and that will be my motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And my motion says total vote failed. Orally, can I have a motion, please? It just came up.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Okay. Except for Councilman Creer, and I think I've made notice to everybody that Councilwoman Seaman will be joining us later on the vote, but she is out of town. So her vote won't count, so it does carry. Thank you. Do you have it recorded? Then please post. Yeah. Just if you'll heed this. Thank you. This goes back to them. Thank you. Are you able to post? Did it post? Did you see it? Aye. Wait, 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 if you will. Talk to...
Hi. Suzanne Belt from Arkey Arbach and Coffin. We were looking for item number 77 to be held in abeyance.
77, but that will be later this morning, but can you take it now? It is on the list. Thank you.
I'm just making sure. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. So did you get that posted? And Councilman Creer, do you vote aye? It's oral.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So that's posted. Hopefully, you're speaking truth. Okay. Yes? Yes. Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 10, For Possible Action to Approve Final Minutes by Reference to the September 18th, October 2nd, 2019. Regular city council meetings. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion to approve those minutes, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the September 18th and October 2nd, 2019 city council meetings.
And there's a motion. Would you please vote, Council, to approve? And then please post. Thank you. The motion carries. And we'll move on now to Agenda Item 11. Items number 11 through 50, with the exception of 30 and 42 on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, recommended for approval by the department, may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my abstention on items number 30 through 33 because they pertain to medical marijuana-related businesses, and one of my sons is involved in that industry. I will be voting on all other items. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Okay. Hearing none from that. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Consent Items Number 11 through 50, with the exceptions of Item 30 and 42.
Thank you very much. And please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to Agenda Item 51. Item number 51, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Purchase and Sale Agreement and Joint escrow Instructions to Facilitate the Purchase of Four Parcels of Real Property from King George LLC, totaling approximately 2.63 acres, as follows. Clark County Assessors Parcel Numbers 162-02110-018, and its estimated 3,750 square-foot building and parking lot. Number 162-02110-15, and its estimated 6,700 square-foot building. Item number 1620211016, estimated 12,000 square-foot building, theater parcel. And Item 16202110-017, and its 1.54-acre parking lot. Collectively, the parcels. And Item 52, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Assignment of Agreement of Purchase and Sale and Joint Escrow Instructions for the Purchase of Those Four Parcels Located at the Southeast Corner of East Charleston Boulevard, South Maryland Parkway, commonly known as Huntridge Theater Ward III. Councilwoman Diaz. Mr. Gerbit, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. Brad Jurick on behalf of the City Attorney's Office...
Can you speak into the microphone? You're not carrying. Thank you.
I will. Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. Brad Jurick on behalf of the City Attorney's Office. I'm really pleased this morning to bring two items to this council, that if you approve them, will result in the purchase and sale of the Huntridge Theater and the assignment of that purchase and sale agreement to Mr. Jay Dapper, who's standing next to me right now. Before we get going, I just wanted to give a little bit of history about the project, let you know how we got where we're at. It was my pleasure recently to meet a fellow by the name of Jonathan Warren. Jonathan Warren's parents are both professors at UNLV, and he is, I wouldn't say an amateur historian, he's a quite good historian. I actually put together the only history that I'm aware of of the Huntridge Theater. And so I just want to share a few tidbits of that with you, because the reason it got where it is and the reason it's got this name. Mr., excuse me, Mr. Lee Hunt was an investor in banking industry, shipping industry, mining industry, made a fortune, and then lost a fortune, but he had a son named Henry Hunt, who decided to make Las Vegas his home in 1923. When he came to Las Vegas, he started investing in land. He bought 4,000 acres in Las Vegas. The 4,000 acres includes the Huntridge Theater, the Huntridge Neighborhood, and includes what we consider the north end of the Strip, where the Sahara Hotel is, where the Old El Rancho is, where Circus Circus is, where the Boulevard Mall is, where the neighborhood is behind it. He had quite a bit of land, and his son, Henry, eventually inherited all of that. Henry married a French woman, and she didn't want to live in the United States. She didn't think it was beautiful enough. So he talked to friends of his about what he could do to maybe get her to move to the United States, and somebody said to him, "You ought to build a Champs Elysees in the United States. That might get her here." And so he did. And that was Maryland Parkway, lined with trees all the way down to Sahara, like the Champs Elysees. He builds this huge round park in the middle of it, and he builds the Huntridge Theater, named after his father, Lee Hunt. The Huntridge Theater at the time was just a remarkable edifice. 75-foot-tall sign, Art Deco. It stood out like a sore thumb in a community that only had 25,000 people in 1944 when it opened, and we still have it today. So that's the short version of the background of the Huntridge Theater. What I'd like to do is talk to you a little bit about what's happened since. As you all know, when I was growing up, that was a movie theater, and I've talked to Councilman Creer about that. We both remember those days, and it was a great place to go. I think I told you at the last meeting in 1964, I saw Mary Poppins on opening night at the Huntridge Theater. In 1975, I saw Rocky Horror Picture Show on opening night at the Huntridge Theater. So I've seen the Huntridge Theater through quite an interesting cycle. But in 1996, the roof caved in, and that led a group of people to put together an organization called Friends of the Huntridge, which applied for state funding to the State Historic Preservation Office, and that got the roof on the Huntridge that exists today. That came with it a bill of $789,000 and some conditions that the state put on it. That came with it, a bill of $789,000 and some conditions that the state put on it. And I'd like to read some of those conditions into the record, because these conditions that I'm going to read were attached to the land in 1997, and they're still with the land today. They've been extended in 2028. And what they say is that they agree to continue the maintenance and repair of the Huntridge property, to preserve the architectural, historical, cultural, and/or archaeological integrity of the same, and to protect and enhance those qualities which make it historically significant as determined by the State Historic Preservation Office. The other condition is that the applicant agrees that no visual or structural alterations will be made to the property without prior permission of the State Historic Preservation Office. The applicant for the loan agrees that the state and its agents and designation shall have the right to inspect the property at all reasonable times in order to ascertain whether or not the condition of these covenants are being observed. And then there was a couple other conditions that I'm going to read, just a short version. One, there was an agreement that the property would be open to the public no less than 12 days a year on an equitable basis, so they wouldn't just be 12 days in a row, they'd spread it out. And finally, the restraints shall run with the property and bind upon the applicant and all successors, heirs, assignees, or issuers. So what that means, in essence, is that whoever took the Huntridge after it was originally taken over by the Friends of the Huntridge have those same conditions. And what happened is the Friends of the Huntridge sold later on. I believe Michael Corthwaite and his business partner were involved for a brief period of time. And then a company called King George LLC, which is Eli Mizrahi and his father, they bought it, and they've had it since then. So in 2016, there was an out-of-court settlement between the Mizrahis and the state of Nevada. The state of Nevada said, "We will reduce the amount that you owe by half." So instead of $790,000, it's $389,000. And that amount would be reduced every year for 10 years if they abided by the conditions and opened the theater for 12 years. There's an ongoing dispute between the state and Mr. Mizrahi as to whether or not he's abided by those conditions, and a new lawsuit was filed this year asking for another kind of remedy, and that's to appoint a special master to take over the theater and do the kinds of repairs that they had hoped that Mr. Mizrahi would do. What Mr. Mizrahi agreed to, though, in 2016, was to extend these covenants that were exposed to expire. In 2017, they got extended to 2028. So people who have called in and said, "Are there covenants that you could attach to the land?" They are there right now. It'll take a negotiation with the state in the future to remove those, and that remains to be seen how that's going to turn out. There's also this ongoing lawsuit, which I filed a motion to intervene in last week, and the judge granted our motion, so we are now part of that lawsuit. What I asked the court to do, because I knew of this pending deal and Mr. Dapper's interest in restoring the theater, was to have the special master's powers limited to just inspecting the theater and reporting to the court right now. So for the next six months, if this deal is approved, the special master is approved by the court, is going to be in the theater, looking at it, seeing what Mr. Dapper's doing, seeing what the city's doing, following the permitting process, because there's a lot that remains to be done. I won't go through all the details. I'll let Mr. Dapper discuss that with you. But with respect to the theater, it's literally going to take a six-month period just to put together the deal for the operator and for the other things that will occur on site. So the judge followed our recommendation, appointed the master with those limitations, and that brings us here today. So before you are two agreements. One is a purchase and sale agreement, and the other is the immediate assignment of that agreement. And the question I get asked all the time is, "Why did you structure the deal this way? Why is this just a straight deal between Mr. Dapper and the Mizrahis for the sale of the Huntridge?" And there are several answers that I think are relevant. One, and this is chief, this gets us involved in the lawsuit. Because if this lawsuit is not resolved, it's going to be a permanent obstruction to the eventual reconditioning, refurbishing, and reopening of the Huntridge Theater. Second, there's an awful lot that the city's going to be involved in during this process that we need to be involved in. One, Mr. Dapper's going to need entitlements for the property that don't exist right now. That means assistance at the city level through the planning department, putting together applications, making sure those applications are refined, and they get through the process as quickly as possible so we make this six-month deadline. And we can't even imagine what might come in between. But I can tell you, one of the things that we bring to the table is a great deal of credibility with the court and with everybody else, because people know if the city's involved in this deal for the very first time in maybe over 20 years, this is the real deal. This, I believe, is going to happen. So there is no city money involved. Mr. Dapper will immediately accept assignment of the purchase and sale agreement. He will, with private dollars, buy the theater if everything checks out at the end of six months. So with that, I have one thing I need to add. There is an exhibit missing to the—excuse me—to the assignment agreement. It's Exhibit B, and it talks about the architectural features that Mr. Dapper will respect as he's going through the building, and that will be the 75-foot sign, the lobby, the marquee, and if it's structurally sound, the actual theater itself. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to Jay Dapper.
Before you do that, if you would, Mr. Gerbit, just one quick question about asbestos or anything that's within the content of the building structure. Where does that get addressed? At what point? Or does that have little relevancy to our vote today?
No, I can address it, or Mr. Dapper can address it. We already have a Level 1 environmental assessment report on the Huntridge, so we know that there are issues like that in there. They will have to be remediated before the theater can be open, for the most part.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. Thank you.
Your Honor, City Council, I'm very glad to be here today. Thank you for your time. I know that there's a lot going on today, but we're here to, again, talk about the Huntridge Theater. So this has been a long time coming. A lot of work has been put into this deal. I truly thank the city's involvement in this deal, because if it wasn't for Brad's efforts and, you know, the city's willingness to back this effort, we wouldn't be standing here, and this would likely not be happening. So, you know, it's truly a special day from that perspective, because I know that there's a lot of people in the community that love this theater, and they want to see it saved. And there's nothing more that I want to see than one day for us to be able to, you know, reopen it, cut the ribbon, and invite the public back into this, you know, very historic, beautiful building. There's a lot of things, like Mr. Gerbit said, that need to be worked out. This is a very old building. There's a lot of investigation that has to occur. There's a lot of work on entitlements, permitting, and a lot of past issues and problems that have to be sorted out. And with the city's help, my hope is that that happens within the next six to eight months, and that we're in the position to then close on the theater and then hopefully start renovations. Throughout this time period, as Mr. Gerbit said, we will be communicating our efforts and plans certainly to the state and then also to the city council as things progress. And our main goal is, there's a lot of community organizations that are very much a part of the Huntridge Theater. They're concerned about it, and they want to make sure that, you know, the new owner of the theater respects the architectural integrity and all the great things about the theater that people love. And so, you know, I'm here to say that, you know, we want to involve all of those organizations in the process, and it's our goal to make sure that, you know, not only is the state and the city, you know, a part of the process, but all of those groups and the public, you know, is a part of, you know, what's next for this amazing and historic building. And so I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Let me—I do have two cards here, speaker cards, while this isn't necessarily public hearing. I do have cards from Melissa Clary and Daniel Roberts. So if you're here and want to address this briefly, I would ask you first, then turn this to council for questions, comments. So I know you're not Melissa Clary.
Hi. My name is Daniel Roberts. I am president of the Huntridge Foundation. Our mission is to preserve the architectural integrity, history, and culture of the Huntridge Theater and the surrounding community. For almost 10 years now, I've publicly advocated for the preservation of the Huntridge Theater, and today will be no different. I'm here to request that the City of Las Vegas do three very important things that will greatly assist with the preservation of this historically significant structure and its legacy for years to come. First, add the Huntridge Theater to the City of Las Vegas Historic Registry. Second, adopt the existing covenants for a term of no less than 25 years. And third, and definitely the most important, fund the future maintenance, oversight, and enforcement of these covenants. How can we begin to speak about saving the Huntridge or preserving the Huntridge without first protecting it from further damage, or intentional or otherwise? For those who are unaware, the Huntridge Theater currently sits on both the state and national registry of historic places, but it does not sit on the city's local registry. It's currently protected by state covenants, which have been mentioned. Those have been in place since 1994. They have not been changed, and they are set to expire in less than 10 years from now, in 2028, which has already been mentioned. Despite these active covenants, the theater has fallen into disrepair since the current owners purchased it in 2002. This is partly because the state of Nevada officially exists over 400 miles away in Carson City, and because of this, it has been difficult and expensive for the State Historic Preservation Office to travel to Las Vegas in order to enforce these protective covenants on a consistent basis. The obvious issues with the state's limited oversight and paltry enforcement of these covenants are clearly exemplified by the current condition of the property and the ongoing litigation against the negligent owners. I believe that we are better suited to control the oversight of our own valued assets here in Las Vegas, and it's high time that we do so. We at the Huntridge Foundation are very excited to see the dawn of a new life for the theater, and we look forward to continuing our research and preservation work as stewards of this historic site. In closing, I want to share one of my favorite quotes that's been inspiring to me from Oscar Wilde. It's very simple. "No man is rich enough to buy back his past." And with that, I want to thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, for your time today, and please support this item with these added conditions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts.
I must state that the other individual, Melissa Clary, had to leave, so I submitted her—
Thank you, her card. And I will put that in our record, and also I see Assemblywoman Swank, and we'd like to hear from her as well. So thank you, Mr. Roberts. And if I could—Madam—
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Heidi Swank. I am the executive director of the Nevada Preservation Foundation. We are located at 330 West Washington in the lovely historic West Side School. So we are in support of Mr. Dapper taking on this project. We know that buildings that are left vacant for too long, and this one has been left vacant for too long, are-get harder and harder to rehabilitate. We've spent some time with Mr. Dapper and Mr. Gerbit and talked through the project. We're very supportive of it. I think that there are a lot of ways in which we can use this project to highlight what historic preservation is. I think there's a lot of kind of misperceptions of what it is to restore a building. I would say, just as a point of information, that the grant that was given to the building came from the Commission on Cultural Centers and Historic Preservation, and this money is—it is there to enable historic preservation projects and has done so for a lot of other buildings across the state, including the El Rancho Hotel in Wells, which will soon be a small-business incubator, and also the church in Virginia City, St. Paul the Prospector, is looking at this as a fund also to restore that church. So this is—while there may be some protections that do come with it and some covenants, it is meant to enable historic preservation. Our other suggestion is that we want to be sure that there's some good information going in, so a historic preservation consultant would probably be very helpful for the project. There's a lot of them across the state and across the region, but we're super excited. We know that Mr. Dapper understands our architectural history and are looking forward to the next phase of the Huntridge Theater. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down and commenting on this. Okay, council. Anybody wishing to make comment? We'll start with the Councilman Knudsen.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Gerbit and Mr. Dapper. This is a project that's super exciting for me, and I've talked with both of you and Assemblywoman Swank many times about it. So it's important to me for a lot of different reasons, but because my word about this area, there are lots of people in Ward 1 who are super excited about the progress that the city and Mr. Dapper, that we can make together. One of the requests I have is because of the historical significance of the project and some of the conditions that were requested of the city, is it possible to get just regular, like, monthly updates on the status of where we are in reviewing the building as a council? Because I have so many people asking me about the status of that building. And then after the six to eight months is over, just an update to the council on the status. I think it's useful and pertinent information for the community that loves that building so much.
It's unanimous from this end. That's entirely desirable, in fact. We're going to be doing it with the court. My question to you, Councilman, would you like it at a live council meeting, or do you just want it in a private briefing?
I would add that it be live in front of council. I think the community deserves to hear where we are and what's happened with this longstanding vacant building.
Then we'll put a regular item on the first meeting of every month for the next six months, just to do a quick update.
Right. And if there's no report, there's no report. We can just strike the issue. So if you would, let's turn to Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say I'm excited about the project. As Mr. Gerbit said, I have a long history of growing up at the Huntridge. It was right down the street from the Fox Theater, and so you either went to the Fox Theater, or you went to the Huntridge to see movies. And my brother and I used to go often, as often as we can, to go see the movies there. And so we're familiar with the building, familiar with its history, and I think we have a great developer who is going to do something great. And it's taken ownership of the entire neighborhood, not just just one particular building, but it's taken ownership of up and down Charleston and the park across the way, and doing a lot of different things. So I thank you and look forward to the success and to the ribbon-cutting for the reopening of the Huntridge. Thank you.
Well, and I'd have to add, your parents must have known you were truant to go to those movies all the time, you and your brother. Okay, Mayor Protam, please.
Thank you. It's actually quite exciting, and I just wanted to tell you that I'm very supportive of it, and I also wanted to give a shout out to Assemblywoman Swank and tell her that I love the blonde.
Thank you. Okay, I think we have—everybody's made comments, and I just say Huntridge was on our list, too, along with the Fox Theater in the '60s. So this will now turn to Councilwoman Diaz, in which board you are. So go for it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And first and foremost, I think this brings a lot of joy and excitement to my neighbors of the Huntridge area. I know that there's been many that have been advocating for something to be done with the Huntridge Theater for many, many years, so I'd like to recognize Mr. Roberts, Ms. Clary, and Ms. Laramie, who reached out about making sure that we do our best to preserve the integrity of the Huntridge Theater as much as possible. I was relieved to hear that the covenants will basically transfer, because, you know, there were certain things that are important to the community that are represented there, and—but I don't want to hamper the ability of getting this work done in an expedient manner. And so I did want to ask if we could also make sure that we're openly communicating with our community partners in this work, with the preservationist community, with the folks who all have an investment in seeing this project and the product of it. And so I wanted to ask, could your—could my office work closely with you, Mr. Dapper, in setting up community meetings by which we are doing our due diligence to hopefully bring the updates to the community before they hear them at city council, just so that we have that open line of communication? So are you amenable?
Yeah, absolutely. And just to speak a little bit to that, so when we finally got the keys to the theater and did our initial walkthrough, we actually invited many members of the community, including Daniel, to that, you know, first time that we cracked the doors open and walked through. And so we're very committed to that, and we look forward to including everybody in this process.
Okay. And also, I just wanted to seek clarity. You will be working with the Nevada Preservation Foundation in partnership to get some of these monies that may potentially be there for—
Yes. Yeah, so at this point, you know, it's too early to say if we will end up seeking any, whether it's state, federal, or, you know, local monies for this project. I mean, at this point, this will be a privately funded project. We're certainly willing, and we want to look into all of the things that are potentially available to us through some of those grants. And so Heidi's organization has already given us some great counsel as to, you know, what's out there, and they're by far the most knowledgeable. And so the plan is, as we move forward through this process, to include them so that we can navigate it and know everything that's going on, because they truly are the experts.
Okay. That's good to know. All right. I really appreciate the update. As always, Mr. Gerbit, you know the history of many things in our city, especially in this area, so thank you for filling us up—or bringing us up to speed about where the Huntridge was created, how it came to be, and now where we're at, and I'm so excited for the potential of what we will see there, you know, hopefully very shortly.
So would you like to make a motion on Agenda Item 51, please, unless you have something else to say?
I'm going to ask you to ask for a motion on 52 first, and then 51.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Being the legal advisor, yes, please, if you'll go to 52 first.
And just for a point of clarification, you did read into the record the covenant— And just for a point of clarification, you did read into the record the covenants that are transferring over. Is that part already of a condition, or I just want to be clear?
Yeah, I'm going to provide the court with, with that new exhibit, and it will, it includes the marquee, the 75-foot sign, the lobby, and the building, if it's structurally sound. Mr. Dapper, for whatever's worth, said something very refreshing. He said he has no interest in doing this project without the theater, and so I can tell you, he is committed as anybody I know. He's a local, and you've seen the wonderful, wonderful projects he's done in Las Vegas already. I'm convinced he's the right guy to do this job.
Yeah, and, and just to, just to reaffirm what Mr. Jerbic said, you know, my plan isn't to come in and try to save a piece or a part of the theater. It's to, to save the entire theater, you know, all of the architectural elements that go along with that, and, you know, it's, I, I mean, I don't, I don't want to say, you know, if, my interest isn't to purchase it and then turn it into something else or do something else with it. It's, it's to actually preserve and restore the theater back to its original glory. If for some reason, you know, we got deep into this and we weren't able to save the building, or there was some reason that, you know, we found that we wouldn't be able to restore it, then, you know, my interest in purchasing it would, would go away. It wouldn't be like I would want to purchase it and knock it down or anything like that. So, I mean, really, the theater is the reason that I'm buying this property, which is, I think, a very important thing to, you know, state.
Okay. So, do we just approve him as, is Mr. Jerbic, or do we need to say?
Just a motion for Item 52 with the additional exhibit, and after you vote on that, then a motion for Item 51.
Thank you.
All right, so I move that we adopt Item 51 with the...
52, we start with 50.
52 first, okay. So, I move to approve Item Number 52 with the exhibit attached.
And if you would, please vote and please post. The motion carries. Thank you, and on Agenda Item 51.
I just moved for approval for Item Number 51, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 51. And please vote and please post. And we're on the way to serve the city with such great...
If we could go to the overhead just real quick, I want to end by showing you this. If they can zoom in. That is the original architectural rendering of the Huntridge Theater by a very significant architect, S. Charles Lee. He did huge movie houses in Hollywood at the time, and to land a talent like that here in Las Vegas, to do something like the Huntridge, is a remarkable thing. So, with that, I thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you in the next month.
It's a wonderful day. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We'll keep an eye out there. Thank you. And now, for those of you on Agenda Item, on Agenda Item 53, thank you for your patience. It is now 10 minutes or 12, so I'm very sorry, but it's just part of being a wonderful government. So, Agenda Item 53, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding an Exclusive Negotiation Agreement (ENA) between City Parkway 5, Inc., CPV, and Allison Curtis Kingsley Mios Michael and Sanchez PC, DBA Comprehensive Cancer Centers of Nevada, developer, to determine the feasibility of a medical office project and a portion of Parcel C and K in Symphony Park bounded by Robin Leach Lane to the north, Promenade Place to the west, the railroad to the east, Bonneville Avenue to the south. This is in Ward 5, Councilman Krier and Mr. Arndt, and I have a disclosure. I see the most han, you're very handsome, and you're lovely, but I see the most handsome man in the world in my life, my son, Oscar, Dr. Oscar Goodman Jr., who is, I am making that disclosure, and I have already checked with legal if I can vote on this, but I just, how can I not start off with my son? So, Mr. Arndt.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman, members of the city council. For the record, Bill Lawrence, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me today is John Bilstein, who's CEO of Comprehensive Cancer Center, Centers of Nevada, Lisa Santuar, who is Director of Marketing and Communications, and of course, Mayor, as you pointed out, Dr. Goodman Jr., who is a shareholder and also a member of the Board of Directors. Our contracting entity is Allison Curtis Kingsley Mios Michael and Sanchez PC, and the doing business as is Comprehensive Cancer Centers of Nevada. We're really excited to introduce this item to you as a first step on what we believe will be a great project, a new project in Symphony Park. Our partner is looking to study the feasibility of building a new medical office project on a portion of Parcels J and K in Symphony Park, which is located just immediately to the east of the Cleveland Clinic Lou Ruvo Center for Brain Health, and it's really been our team's vision, and certainly the mayor and the council's vision, to support academic medicine in our downtown, in our Las Vegas Medical District, and of course, now it's spilling into Symphony Park. The project would be an approximate 100,000-square-foot medical office building. The scope is being determined now, and would include a pharmacy, lab, auditorium, conference room, physician offices, infusion room, and exam rooms. In order to fully engage partners, our partner and our developer has requested an ENA, an exclusive negotiation period for this land with the city of Las Vegas for a period of 120 days, to conduct feasibility and due diligence. They have agreed to put up a $100,000 good faith deposit, and we are recommending approval. With that, I'll turn it over to John and his team, who would like to say a few remarks.
Good morning, Mayor Goodman, city council members. My name is John Bilstein. I am the Executive Director for Comprehensive Cancer Centers of Nevada, and we're here today to speak on the opportunity to build in Symphony Park located in the Las Vegas Medical District. Who we are, we are a multi-specialty practice. We have medical oncology, hematology, radiation oncology, we have breast surgeons, pulmonologists, we also do genetic counseling, and we have world-renowned research right here in Las Vegas. For those that don't know, we do Phase 1, 2, and 3 clinical trials. We do about 170 a year. We have patients that come from out of state, out of the country. Last year, we had 3,000 people come for medical tourism to see our physicians, like Dr. Oscar Goodman Jr., who is a researcher and an amazing medical oncologist. You know, at the core, patients, and that's why we're here. We have offices throughout southern Nevada. We have 14 total offices. We have 46 physicians, 14 mid-levels, and 600-plus employees. And so, we're here today because we want to continue our growth. We want to continue to support the patients of Las Vegas, and most importantly, as the city grows, we want to grow with you. We continue to invest in technologies. We are at the forefront of buying the latest and greatest, if it's a CyberKnife technology, which is radiation, if it's buying the best lab equipment, that's state-of-the-art. We are the premier provider in the state for all medical and radiation oncology. For the city of Las Vegas, we, as I said, we would bring cutting-edge clinical cancer research right here to the Las Vegas Medical District. We will greatly facilitate access to cancer care for Las Vegas residents, and we will be able to attract expertise to Las Vegas that could benefit all. We will provide the city additional employment opportunities and subsequent downstream revenue. Part of our plan is to relocate one of our offices in Henderson to Las Vegas. Being able to better serve the west-central patient population is critical, and we want to be collaborative with the Las Vegas Medical District. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did you want to add, introduce anybody?
Yeah, just, this is from, from sort of the heart and soul of Las Vegas. We've, we've always been missing downtown, and it's been exciting to see how the medical district has developed over the last 15 years, and we really do want to be a part of it. We have important partners downtown, including University of the Nevada Las Vegas School of Medicine. We serve as mentors for both the medical students, teaching some of their courses, as well as hosting some of the residents, and it's always been a question, why, why aren't you guys closer to us when, when the residents drive out for their rotations? And I've not been able to answer that, but, you know, deep down, we definitely have been missing this opportunity, and we don't want to miss it any longer. We also work closely with the Lou Ruvo Brain Clinic in collaborative efforts, and I think it would position us, be able to partner more effectively with those entities. We also plan to move our research program downtown, and our research program, we view that as kind of the, the soul of our practice. It's something that we are, allows us to differentiate ourselves from other practices in the valley, and it would also provide patients with a central access point for those clinical trials. So, I just wanted to thank all of you for listening, and we look forward to working with the city of Las Vegas moving forward.
Thank you. And your name, please?
Lisa Santuar. We'd also be possibly relocating our central business office, which is currently located in Henderson, to the city of Las Vegas, as well as we, so that would be about 100 employees that would move from Henderson to Las Vegas, in addition to attracting patients and hopefully also recruiting new physicians to the new location.
Thank you very much. Before I turn it over, not only do we have fabulous physicians, and I have a magnificent son, but I just was advised by our wonderful attorneys and that this is a shareholder company, and my son, you are a shareholder, which is wonderful for you. It's terrible for me because I can't vote now. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that clarification, and I thank our attorneys for being so wise and advising me. But any questions, comments from council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First, it's good to see my old friend. We call him Obi, and Mr. Bilstein, Oscar Goodman Jr., I never knew him as that, I only knew him as Obi, so what's up, Obi? Good to, good to see you, good to see you all. This is a great project that is going to round out the medical corridor. As you guys know, the UNOB Medical School is coming down on Shadow Lane. Hopefully, we get that building going, the Ruvo Institute right next door, and all the other ancillary businesses that are going to come out of the medical corridor and the medical district, and I think you're well positioned to, to, to do fantastic things in our community. I hope this all works out, which I'm confident that it will. I know this is just the first phase of a whole bunch of due diligence, but hopefully, we'll be able to move forward, and we'll be at a ribbon cutting sometime very soon. So, I welcome the project into Ward 5, and I think it's a great, great opportunity for our community.
Okay, please, Councilman Knudsen.
Madam Mayor, thank you, and thank you for the, the presentation. When I saw this on the briefing agenda, I was super excited. I wish it was coming to Ward 1, Councilman Krier. But, but, it's close. It's, it's close enough that if it's possible, I'd like my staff to reach out to you, because I'd like to learn a lot more about what you do, and then integrate you into some of the ongoing work of the medical district, because we're now taking it into hyperdrive, learning about how the city can partner with our medical service sector providers to bring about greater access to health care, and I do think that you're a key, critical part of that conversation within the medical district. So, to the extent that you're available and Councilman Krier is comfortable, I would love to learn a whole lot more and, and jump in if I can.
Okay, well, Councilman Krier, if there are no other questions, comments, and again, I will be abstaining but full of excitement.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Item 53.
There's a motion, please vote, and please post. It just happened without voting. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much, and sorry for the delay again. Long patience.
Thank you.
You must be hungry too. Thank you. Wonderful. And of course, as we look forward to 2020 and we get the census, you never know what happens to Symphony Park that used to be in Ward 1, and then it changed, and so, hold on tight, or share, or whatever you're doing. No sharing. Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item 54. Whoops, I've got too much stuff. We need bigger desks. A bench, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Approval of an Appeal of a Work Card Denial for Nicholas Michael Lipinski, DB at Lives, Lives Smart Automation at 4175 Cameron Street, Suite 82, Clark County. Ms. McElhaw, there you are. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of city council. Mary McElhaw, Deputy Planning Director, for the record. Today's item is for an appeal of a work card denial. Mr. Lipinski is applying for work card to work as a sales representative at a burglar alarm company located in the city of Henderson called Lives Smart Automation. A work card is required for him to come into the city of Las Vegas to provide services. He was denied a work card by the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department due to a felony conviction of burglary in 2003. Per our city of Las Vegas municipal code, he has the right to appeal this decision before you today as city council members. In December 2002 and in April of 2003, Mr. Lipinski was found forging his grandmother's signature on her personal checks to obtain funds. He was charged and pled guilty and did serve time. Mr. Lipinski would have been approximately 21-years-old, I believe, at the time of this incident. There are no other criminal charges or convictions against Mr. Lipinski. The events surrounding this incident were the only areas of concern that actually were identified in the report provided by Metro. The owner of the business is supporting Mr. Lipinski's work card appeal and has signed an affidavit of support, and Mr. Lipinski is here today with his legal counsel, Mr. Jay Brown. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown, or Mr. Lipinski, or is his employer here?
No, he's out of town, but there is an affidavit, as Ms. McElhaw said, in support of this. Jay, for the record, Jay Brown, 520 South Fourth Street, representing the advocate Nicholas Lipinski, and as you can see, he's here as well. The facts were pretty simple, and they've been laid out, as always, by Ms. McElhaw very accurately. So, I'll just be very brief and just basically add to it and say it's been 17 years since this incident, 17 years. He's older, he's wiser, he has no criminal issues. Since then, as you heard, he needs to support his family, and he's requesting the city grandma work card. He has, he's 37 now, and wife and four young children, so we would ask for your approval.
Thank you very much. Anything you'd like to say, Mr. Lipinski?
I don't think so.
Okay. Is there a recommendation? Ms. McElhaw, please.
Ms. Mayor Goodman, usually what we do if you are interested in appealing a work card, usually what we do is we do it site-specific, but since this is a business located in Henderson, and he's coming into the city and traveling around the city, we would recommend that you do a company-specific, so a company-specific work card with a one-year administrative review.
Okay, and is that agreeable with...
That's acceptable. We appreciate it, and say thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Councilman Anthony, please.
Well, if nobody objects, I think he needs the work card. He's trying to support his family. No reason to not give it to him, so I will make a motion to grant the work card specific to that particular company, and that's my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post.
Did you recommend a review, or no?
Yes, Councilman Anthony, we do recommend a one-year administrative review. It would not have to come back before you. Basically, we just put it on our calendar, and a year, we just take a look to see if anything has come up, and if not, he can move forward with a five-year card.
All right, I'll make that a part of my motion, too.
Okay, and that's agreeable, Mr. Brown, with your plan?
That's correct. Thank you so much.
Okay, please vote. There it goes. Good luck. We'll look forward to it.
Thank you.
Good luck to you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. McElhaw. We are now on to Agenda Item 55. Boards and Commissions, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of City Manager Scott Adams to Serve as Staff Member Representative on AB 73 Working Group Established During the 80th Legislative Session 2019 to Address Issues to the Homeless. The final group represents all participating jurisdictions, includes at least one staff appointment per jurisdiction, and a minimum of two and up to six appointees from within the community focused on homeless issues or initiatives. Ms. Shani Coleman was originally appointed to this seat, however, she's no longer a city employee, and a replacement must be named. So, I would ask Mayor Protem to make a motion to appoint our city manager, Scott Adams, to this vacancy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My motion is to appoint our city manager with that great tie on today to, to this...
Ooh, a good devil.
Yeah, that's a great tie, to this appointment.
Thank you. There's a motion to appoint Mr. Adams, please. You've got to chuckle over there. And the motion carries. Congratulations, Mr. Adams. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 56, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment and Nominee Keith Rogers to the Las Vegas Clark County Library District Board of Trustees. The current vacancy exists due to the resignation of Dr. Constance Brooks... The current vacancy exists due to the resignation of Dr. Constance Brooks, whose term expires April 2023. Unexpired terms must be filled, and Mr. Rogers is eligible and wishes to be appointed. So Councilman Creer, you have a motion on this item, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to make a motion for approval of Dr. Keith Rogers to the Las Vegas Clark County Library Board of Trustees. I have to thank Dr. Constance Brooks, who served in the capacity, who recently relocated to Washington, DC, who did an excellent job, and I'm sure that Dr. Rogers would do the same. He is a great person. I think he's going to bring a lot of passion and wisdom to the board. He currently runs the Center of Academic Enrichment and Outreach at UNLV, so he deals with a lot of kids, with the Trio and Gero programs, and first-generation-going kids. So it's a great transition to work with the Library District as well. So without any, if there's no discussion, I make a motion for approval.
Okay, please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 57. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment and nominee Richard Manhattan to the Civil Service Board of Trustees. Mr. Carlito Reyes resigned, and his seat must be filled. Mr. Manhattan is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Councilman Knutson, you have a motion on this item, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Richard Manhattan lives in the Enchanted Village neighborhood in Ward One. Was a really great resource that I met on my campaign. I think he's going to be an excellent addition to our team at the City of Las Vegas. With that, I'll make a motion for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on agenda item 57 to appoint Mr. Martinez. Please vote and please post. But I can't, there we go. That motion carries. Agenda item 58. Discussion for possible action regarding the reappointment of John Curran to the Arts Commission as my appointee as mayor. The Director of Cultural Affairs recommends Mr. Curran's reappointment, and so that's my motion. Would you please vote on Mr. Curran's reappointment? And then please post. And that motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 59. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment and nominee Marlon Rice to the Ward Five seats of Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic Signal Capital Improvements Advisory Commission. Ms. Lillian McMorris occupied the Ward Five seat, a resident seat, and resigned after moving out of the ward. So Councilman Creer, may I have a motion, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. First, let me thank Ms. Lillian McMorris for serving in this capacity. Many of you know her. She is a stalwart in our community, and she will be missed. But I'd like to make the recommendation for Marlon Rice to serve in the Ward Five seat for the Traffic and Parking Commission and the Traffic and Capacity Improvement Advisory Commission. Mr. Marlon, aka DJ Thump, you might recognize him for KCP 702 Wake Up Crew. He's just a great guy. He is a Ward Five resident, and he truly is passionate about our community. So it is my pleasure to nominate him for this board.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you very much. We'll move on to agenda item 60. Recommending bills eligible for adoption at this meeting. Bill number 2019-31. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill number 2019-31. First Amendment. An ordinance to amend various provisions of the Unified Development Code, LVMC Title 19, to provide clarification and standardization relating to distance separation standards and measurements. Clarify when access-related standards refer to vehicular access or pedestrian access or both. Establish additional standards regarding the interpretation of terms and provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on agenda item 60 to approve. Please vote and please post. Adding First Amendment. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 61. Bill number 2019-34. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes. Bill number 2019-34. An ordinance to amend the Town Center Development Standards Manual to allow the waiver of certain minimum distance separation requirements in relation to the use of packaged liquor off-sale establishment, and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion on agenda item 60. Please vote, 61, excuse me. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. Thank you. And the item number 62 will be trailed and heard after agenda item 76. We'll move on to agenda item 63. Bill number 2019-38. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes. Bill number 2019-38. An ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the laws, obligations, and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. ANX 77014. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve agenda item 63. Please vote and please post. The motion carries. Agenda item number 64. Bill number 2019-39. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes.
Please do so.
Bill number 2019-39. An ordinance granting to Crown Castle Fiber LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the State of New York and authorized to do business in Nevada, a non-exclusive franchise for a telecommunications service within the corporate limits of the City of Las Vegas, subject to and in accordance with that certain franchise agreement entered into between the City of Las Vegas and Crown Castle Fiber LLC, and providing for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve on agenda item 65. Please vote and please post. Motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 65. Councilman, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, please.
Bill number 2019-41. An ordinance creating the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District Number 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A, ordering a street project, storm sewer project, sanitary sewer project, drainage project, and water project within the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, and providing other matters related thereto. Move for approval.
There's a motion on agenda item, where are we, 65? Please vote and please post. That motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item 66. Bill number 2019-42. Councilman, I'm assuming you would like the bill read?
I do.
Thank you. Please do so.
Bill number 2019-42. An ordinance concerning the City of Las Vegas, Nevada Special Improvement District 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A, and assessing the cost of local improvements against the assessable property benefited by the local improvements, and providing other matters related thereto.
Thank you very much.
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve agenda item 66. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And we'll move on to agenda item 67. Bill number 2019-43. Again, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay, please.
Bill number 2019-43. An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale by the City of its Special Improvement District Number 814, Summerlin Villages 21 and 24A, Local Improvement Bonds, Series 2019, approving the form of certain documents with respect to such bonds, ratifying action taken by city officers toward the issuance of such bonds, and providing other matters related thereto. Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve agenda item 67. Please vote and please post. And the motion carries. Agenda item 68. Recommending committee bills eligible for adoption later meeting.